One ordinance and one resolution in this part of the agenda session and then we were, then we're going to move to committee meetings. Madam Clerk, would you please read six A?
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Twenty-Five, Article One, Section Twenty-Five Thirty-Nine, Panhandling.
See no lights, I'm assuming everyone is ready for this evening's vote? So, please read seven A.
A resolution to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mark B. Miller, Marco A. Celenda, and Karen Azar to the Stormwater Regulations Board.
See no lights there either. All right, so without further ado, we are going to move to the Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting, Councilperson Burrus, come on down.
Called order Public Works and Transportation Committee? Thank you, anyone opposed? Let's go with Public Works. Well, hello, Donald. How are you?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
They gave you the really long agenda, huh?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay, you're cool, it'll be okay. Ordinance's final reading tonight. Now, we've already read these ones, are there any questions about A, B, and C? Okay, let's talk about next week, resolutions, Public Works. Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for Hazen and Sawyer for professional services for design and construction phase services relating to contract number W fourteen zero zero six one zero one, Mockenson Bend, W W T P, secondary clarifier upgrades, a consent decree project for an increased amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars, for a revised contract amount not to exceed one million nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Councilman Henderson, anything? All right, Jay.
A resolution authorizing the award of contract number P sixteen zero zero five two zero one to Advanced Training Systems, Inc. of St. Paul, Indiana, H C S O C P D target system in the amount of eighty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, with a contingency amount in the amount of four thousand four hundred dollars, for an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
Councilman? It's you. All right? And you're up again with Kay. We're really cleaning up the valley, okay? Kay, please.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for Lane and Liner LLC of Tucker, Georgia, relative to contract number W twelve zero two nine two zero one, Fires Branch Interceptor and Basin Improvements, a consent decree project, for an increased amount of one million six hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars, to reduce the contingency amount of two hundred million, for a revised contract amount not to exceed nine million five hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents, for a total amount of nine million seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents.
Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Stone, this is a pretty substantial amount for a change order, correct? You'll kind of bring us up to date with what this one's all about.
This particular project actually was utilizing S R, S F R F funds, and we found that we had additional money left over, so we did some additional work within the same project. That is correct. Um, yeah. And Mike Moreno from Jacobs can give you the details of what the work was.
Good afternoon. Yeah, so this particular work is about four thousand linear feet of thirty-inch diameter interceptor pipeline that needs to be rehabilitated. So, Donald is correct, there's available funds in the loan, use it or you lose it. And this particular project was on the next FY eighteen's capital, so we decided to do it now, while the money's, because S R F funds are hard to come by.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for C D M Smith, Inc., for professional services for design and construction phase services relative to contract number W twelve zero twenty-six one zero two, Dupont Pump Station and Basin Improvements Phase Two, a consent decree project for an increased amount of nine hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents, for a revised contract amount not to exceed two million five hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents.
Councilman Mitchell, you good? All right, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one, final, for Chase Plumbing and Mechanical, Inc. of Chattanooga, Tennessee, relative to contract number W twelve zero two six two zero one, Dupont Pump Station and Basin Improvement Phase One, a consent decree project for a decreased amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and eight dollars and eighty-one cents, to release a contingency in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and forty dollars, for a revised contract amount not to exceed five million one hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents.
Councilpersons Mitchell and Smith, anything? You good? Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for C H two M Hill Engineers for Professional Services for Design and Construction Phase Services relative to contract number W fifteen zero zero two one zero one, Fires Branch South Chickamauga Creek Five Interceptor Rehabilitation, a consent decree, a consent decree project for an increased amount of one hundred and four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, for a revised contract amount not to exceed nine hundred and twenty-five thousand eighty dollars.
Councilman Gilbert.
What are we doing for the increase?
During the process, again, when we start off with the original bids, we look at the hours that we expect this particular project went over. The actual additional work, is that, you have a question about the actual additional work?
So, what's additional work, what was it?
As part of this project, again, it's additional work that the city wanted, it's four thousand linear feet of additional rehab in, that we're going to be doing as to support an upcoming S R F loan. So, this particular contractor had a lot of, they did the pre-design on it, so it just makes a lot of sense for them to go ahead and do this design economically, so it'll support us getting the next S R F loan.
So, we say we saving money by doing this, correct?
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt, absolutely, on this particular one, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number two, final, for Arcadis U.S., Inc., for Professional Construction Phase Service, Services Relative to Contract Number S twelve zero zero nine one zero three, Carter Street Storm Drainage Pipe Repair Project, a consent decree project, for a decreased amount of three hundred and fifty dollars, for a revised contract amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Councilman Oglesby?
No questions.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for Arcadis U.S., Inc., for Professional Services for Design and Construction Phase Services, related, relating to contract number W zero nine zero one 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 zero one, Orchard Knob Pump Station Improvements, a consent decree project, for an increased amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, for a revised contract amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and six, six thousand seven hundred, ah, excuse me, six thousand seventy-seven dollars, seven hundred and forty-five.
So, six hundred seventy-seven thousand seven forty-five. It's been a crazy day. Councilwoman Burrus?
No questions, Madam Chair.
All right. Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number four for Burns and McDonald Engineering Company for Professional Services for Design and Construction Phase Services, relating to contract number W twelve zero one six zero one two, Citico C S O T F, and Pump Station Improvements, a consent decree project, for an increased amount of six thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, for a revised contract amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-two cents.
Councilman, you good? Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number two for Burns and McDonald Engineering Company for Professional Services for Design and Construction Phase Services Relative to Contract Number W sixteen zero one three one zero one, Citico Pump Station Reliability Improvement, a consent decree project, for an increased amount of fifty-six thousand three hundred dollars, for a revised contract amount not to exceed one million one hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Councilman? You good?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into blanket contracts for professional services for the Support of Wastewater Capital Improvements Program, Contract Number W eighteen zero zero one, for the nineteen consultant firms and submitted qualifications in the six different categories, per their qualification package for one year of a term, up to five years, with this year's amount to be no more than seven point five million.
So, tell us about that.
Yes, Madam Chair, actually, because this is a, an old process that's coming into a newer system, I'm going to ask Bill to come in and explain it, because he can give you the historical part, and kind of what we're trying to do here now.
Sure, Bill?
Certainly, thank you, members of the council. The, this particular grouping, so this is a pre-qualification of professional services for doing both design services as well as construction oversight, for projects that have to do with the wastewater system. We first went through this process about five or six years ago, the very first time, in order to pre-qualify, and that term was also for approximately five years, so, and at that time, it was, we were not using blanket contracts for these types of processes, and so that's the, that's the difference that we wanted to make sure you were aware of today, is that going forward, our current process is to actually utilize this as a blanket contract. So, you all have been used to seeing separate resolutions for each one of the wastewater projects that have been done in the past, under the blanket contract process, there would, just like with other blanket services that we have, for professional services, whether it's surveying, geotechnical services, landscape architecture, those are just a few of the ones that are currently, the council will authorize those once a year, and it's for a multi-year. So, in this case, this is for a five-year pre-qualification of the nineteen vendors, and there are the six different subcategories that we have that are listed for each one of those. And so, those nineteen are qualified, some of them are in more than one area, and so, for the five-year term, we would come back at the end of the, of each year and get renewal from the council, in order to proceed into the next year, and there would be an additional authorization amount for each subsequent renewal year. So, the seven point five million dollars that we're talking about this year would be for the next twelve months, and so, these are budgeted dollars that have already been set aside inside the wastewater budget, and there is a, there's a process to go through and, and be able to select those, and Jeff Rose, who's the Deputy Director at Waste Resources, can, can help step through that, that process, in terms of how we select from within that, in order to make sure that there's equity among those that are selected, both in terms of making sure that we match up the right amount of qualifications, as well as with those that it may have already gotten a previous contract, and we would have been released. So, going forward, what you'll see is, you'll see these renewals that are, that move forward, but we will have this process that goes along.
So, what you're saying is you've taken it out of council's hands to approve anything twenty-five thousand dollars or above?
It's, this just conforms to the current process, yes, for, for, as far as blankets are concerned, that's correct.
So, currently, we're in, we're approving things on an individual basis?
Correct, and that was, that was based on how the pre-qualification was used at the time.
Sure, so, so, they're pre-qualified people, and, and obviously, you have to do that. However, anything twenty-five thousand dollars or above still comes before council. Am I correct that the net effect of this is taking this away from council? You have carte blanche to spend however you want, as long as it's with a qualified person?
From, from these selected, correct, from, from these selected firms, yes.
The answer's yes, okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's say, over the next five years, those professional firms move into town that are highly qualified to do this work, but what you're saying is, is they won't even get a shot at it for five years?
For these, for these specific subtypes, you know, we could, there is, there is the option to be able to choose off, off that. At this point, I might ask Bonnie, Bonnie Woodward to be able to speak to that, in terms of what that process is, but this is, this is in an effort in order to be able to save time in, in going through those.
To clarify, from our overall perspective, what they are attempting to do is to, instead of per project, conduct a, what's called a request for qualification process. Right now, they are conducting that in a fashion that is specific to each project, and they are wanting to pull that to a more broad level, and foresee their, their projects for a respective year, and award a blanket, and get the, the full amount approved, so the consolidated equivalent of, of these per-project approvals that council's been used to seeing. They're wanting to get them approved through, through this body, in a batch, in a, in a general blanket contract, and then apply them to the specific projects as, as applicable, as, as they manage them, because a project is a, is a, is a, a total of multiple contracts. So, basically, they are wanting to, they are wanting to make the process more efficient, and not, and not conduct a, a public solicitation process, which involves advertising money, staff time, every time that this is done, if they are able to adequately describe what they're needing, the professional service that they're needing, for a year in a more broad level that is not specific to a project. So, it's basically, it's, and from purchasing standpoint, it's basically a facilitation difference, but, but what, the value that you get from oversight does not change, it's just the, the way in which it's explained to you is what will be changing.
Okay, I, I understand the intent, and it sounds very much more efficient, but my question, my specific question was, let's say, a minority-owned firm moves into town in the second year of this five-year deal, how do they get a shot at it? Wow, I got some answers, here we go.
Well, just one thing I want to point out, Councilman, Mr. Chairman, is, it's one year of a five-year, so each year it'd have to come back for renewal, so if there have been firms that want, that you all know of, that you want a chance to bid, the council would still have to reauthorize this every one year, so it wouldn't be exclusionary over five years.
So, the process would be, if I understand what you're saying, the process would be that we, we as a council would make the decision, no, we want you to go back out and do RF, is there RFPs?
I believe it'd be RFQs.
Yeah, so we redo the RFP process?
The council would have the opportunity to advise the administration to go in that direction, through not renewing the blanket each year.
Great, thanks, that's what I needed to know.
So, I still have a question here. I understand the blankets, so this is seven point, ostensibly seven point five million dollars a year? The first year is seven point five million dollars?
That is correct.
All right.
For multiple, for multiple projects?
I, I get it.
Okay.
I get it. So, so my question partially relates to, and I understand the efficiencies. So theoretically, we have no oversight on what exactly is, is expended in individual areas? We've taken that away from ourselves, is that correct?
Um, no, I don't think so. Each, these are, this is for the professional services side, so each of the construction contracts is still going to come forward, so council, council's still making budgetary appropriations, so the projects that these dollars come from are from, from line items that are, that are in the budget that's been approved by council.
Okay, let me, because I, I guess I'm a little slow, but if we give you seven point five million dollars to spread among these people, whoever these people are, and will those people be listed in the, the final resolution? Or we're just leaving that up to you two?
They're listed on the resolution, then they're not, they're not specifically in the caption, but they're actually on the, below the caption and above the signature, all nineteen.
All right. So, my question is, you have the list of people, and you have seven point five million We're operating on faith that you're spending that seven five, if it's over twenty-five thousand, or fifty thousand, or whatever, that you're doing it the most expedite, most cost-efficient and effective way?
Yes.
That is coming out of our hands. So, we will not have the ability to ask questions about this, is that correct? Because I'm pretty familiar with blanket contracts, they're as, as needed contracts, so.
As, as far as asking, as far as being able to ask questions about, about the specific design scope for, for the individual projects, is, I want to make sure I understand that, because there will be, obviously, there's always the opportunity to ask questions during appropriations and construction, and we would certainly involve, you know, the appropriate council member.
All right, let me, let me try it again. If we give you money for a blanket contract, to employ these people as needed, what we are saying to you is, you have up to seven point five million dollars to use these people however you wish, for the next year, with no oversight. Is that correct? I, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm saying, is that correct?
I, I, I think my exception is, when you add in the without oversight, there's always oversight.
Who is?
So, so I, I guess perhaps that's, that's where my.
And, good, who's doing the oversight?
Certainly, we, we have a, we have a process that.
Will council see it?
We can, we can certainly brief you at any point in time of it, it is not something that would have to come back to council for additional.
Okay, so, so the answer's no, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Oh, yeah. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Madam Chair, is this, will this be done by committee?
Yes, as, as far as selecting from the nineteen for the, for the individual projects.
What about each individual awarded contract?
Well, for, for the, for these design services.
Within the seven point five?
Right, within the seven point five, those would be done, those would be done by an internal committee, using a criteria, and, and as I mentioned a moment ago, Jeff Rose, who's the Deputy Director at Waste Resources, has, can, can outline that, we're, we're prepared to go over that today as well, if you'd like to hear about that process.
And does that committee change?
Only in terms of, if people resign or leave, or if they change jobs, then certainly, yes, there would be.
Sure, I'm just trying to figure out, are we creating another body within a body that's approving seven point five million dollars worth of contracts, that's what I'm wanting.
These are, these are, these are staff, these are staff positions that are, that are already part of the process. Even, even up to, in the process that we've had to this point, these are people who have already been involved in, in making recommendations to city council, so it's just a matter of, so, everything prior to this, it's similar people that are doing that same type of work already, is part of their job.
Okay, so the committee would probably be the same folks each time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Gilbert?
I got a question for our lawyer. Contracts, I'm kind of familiar with some of them, but if this is your contract, and if we do not give them a letter saying that potentially we want to rebid this, it'll automatically go into the next following year, correct?
It depends on the language in the contract itself, it says it's one of a five-year term here, where a person would be available during this term.
So, do you have in that contract where you have to give them notice that it will automatically renew for the next following year?
Actually, this, this particular RFQ is written in such a way that we're not, we're not going to sign contracts with all nineteen at once. It was stated in the RFQ that we would sign contracts with them as they were selected for individual projects. So, so each individual project, so they, they are told as part of the RFQ, they are, they are purely submitting qualifications about how, about their ability to be able to perform this type of work, and then as we have a project and they're selected for it, then we will actually sign that contract at that point in time. So, this is, blanket contract in this case is, is a mechanism in order to be able to, to perform the, the, the pre-qualification. Without this step, we can't go to the next step, which is being able to notify, this is our, this is our way of notifying these nineteen, that yes, you've submitted, yes, you're qualified to do this work, this is the work that you're qualified to do, and now we can move to the next step of being able to select and begin negotiations with any of those folks. So, without this, so this is, this, in this particular case, because of the way the RFQ is written, it's, it's, it's a step along the way in moving towards that.
Have we done this before, not this method, but in the past, with these companies?
We, not, we have, we do have blanket contracts for other services, for other professional services, so stormwater services, landscaping, the landscape architecture, surveying, and geo-environmental work, are all in, RPR services, we do have separate blanket contracts for each one of those. Some of those firms that are on those contracts are also in this, but not every one of these contracts participate in those other five that I mentioned. Now, those, those other RFQs are written differently, and so, they, they're, this one is, this one is written a little differently, in terms of how the qualification comes first, and the contract comes second, with, with selection for an individual project.
So, this is the first time you did it this way?
Yes. Yes, as a, yes, as, as a blanket for these services.
So, we have done services like this in the past, but not this way, correct?
Correct.
So, what do we say, what are we saving again by doing this, dollar amount wise? I read them saying it because what's going to trigger us to know in the future, because if we don't bring it up, who's going to trigger this, saying it's coming up again?
Well, every year, it would be, Public Works will have to present the resolution for renewals, so I think we most recently have, have submitted some of the other blankets for renewal, I think, within the last three or four weeks, there have been two different profession, two different blanket professional services contracts that have come before the council. One was for on-call stormwater modeling, and the other one was for landscape architecture services, both of which were professional services for on-call, on-call professional services, they were just in, they were in a different area of professional service. And so, those, those would come back before the council, because we would present them to you at that point in time.
So, every year, you come back up here saying that we need to pull from this?
Correct, we would, we would come back asking for renewal, or if in the case, you know, and, and certainly, anything is, you know, things, things are possible, just like the comment was made earlier about the council being able to say, no, don't renew, move forward, those are decisions that the department and purchasing, we do that with every blanket contract, whether it's professional services or not, or is that something we want to do, or do we think the scope has changed? Do we think our need has changed? Do we think the vendors that are there provide different services? And so, there's always that option, which we would have to do in advance, to re-advertise it again. So, those, that would be something the department would do, and work with purchasing in that, but it's not our expectation that we would do that unless, unless there was a.
So, we can counsel at any time, without any penalty?
Then, the, the penalty would be in terms of schedule and, and time for us, you know, certainly, staff time. Now, dollar-wise, there's no, there's no guarantee to any of these nineteen that they will get any work, or all of the work, or some portion of the works, there's no written guarantee to any of them that they'll get a prescribed amount of work, so this is not a requirements contract, it's a blanket contract, which gives us the authorization to use them, but does not require us to use them. And then, so, in terms of penalties for backing up, if we, if we got to the point that eleven months from now, we were asking for renewal, so that we could renew it before it expired, and we were advised to back up and, and, and resubmit an RFQ, then without an extension of some sort, to get us beyond the time it takes to prepare the RFQ, advertise it, score those participants, and come back with, with another blanket contract, then we would be several months behind this process. Doing it this way, as opposed to individual projects, saves us anywhere from three to six months of, of time that, that we save. So, if we were to come back eleven months from now, asking for a renewal. So if we were to come back 11 months from now asking for a renewal and the answer was, we think you should do it differently, then we would at that point have to ask for a minimum of a six-month extension to give us enough time to prepare the RFQ, advertise it and be able to go back out. Just because that's, that's what this is saving us, is, 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 is time.
Time?
Yes.
Did it interfere with you in the past in any kind of way for time?
Can you repeat the question?
The old way we've been doing it, does it, I knew you were saying time is the only thing we benefit, correct?
Correct, because these are not solicitations based on price. So I mean, it's, you know, every time you, you're not allowed under state law to, to compete these on price, so we have to do it based on qualifications. So when we get to a project, we negotiate both the scope of the work and the fee to perform those services have to be negotiated individually.
Okay.
Okay.
I ain't satisfied, okay.
Councilman Mitchell?
I don't have any questions about this. I would be curious if any more council people have questions about this, but I do have something after this is finished for now.
I do have, excuse me, Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, ma'am. I do have one more, Bill. So what I'm understanding is this is for efficiency sake?
Yes.
You're saying we could move along projects that we have in the pipeline much faster if we didn't get in the way, so to speak?
There's.
I like to speak, I like to speak, I like to speak in plain terms sometimes, Bill.
Right.
So you're saying that we would be able to move projects along a lot quicker?
Certainly, once, once this is, once this blanket is approved, then we would, we would be able to complete the process of notifying selected and selected firms for the next projects and move at that point immediately into, into scope and fee negotiations. And so for whether there's a project that is known or it comes up immediately, then we could enter straight into that without having to write an RFQ in order to define that, that particular project and advertise and wait on that project, yes.
Great, last question, Madam Chair, if I may. How will this be tracked so that we would know this?
Very, very good question. We do have a process in place for that. And Jeff, I know you've, you've gone through what that process is and he can, he can speak to what that process is. But obviously, for each one of those, in terms of, you know, there's, there's an equity component to that process of selection and that's something that, as we go through that, that is something that would be tracked and would be available as well.
And the last part of that is, we, we would be presented with a, I guess, a report or a summary of, wow, look how great this worked?
Yes, we can, we can certainly work out, you know, on, in what way do we communicate that back whenever.
Kind of a proof is in the pudding kind of guy, so.
Certainly.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think that was my question, is how do we get a report on who gets what for transparency purposes? How does that happen? If it's blanket theoretically, and I know obviously that isn't true, half of 7.5 million could go to one company. How do we make sure that there's equity, that there's, yeah? And who gets what?
Okay, our, just quickly, our process for selecting each consultant is that we have, we have a process and have it written down here, so we make sure we do it correctly.
Do we have copies of that?
I don't, do they have copies of that? No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
We can get, we can get copies to you. But it's basically, it's, it's about creating equity in the system. And so we have five different criteria we score things on. The first was their score in their category that they're submitting on. If it's maybe a wastewater plant project, what did they score? How, how are they able to do that project? That was the process Bill was talking about through the RFQ. Then we look at project eligibility. Do they have a project already in this batch of SRF loans? If they do, they get fewer points. Do they have, how much fee do they have already for this batch of projects? If they have already gotten the project that has a pretty high fee, they get fewer points. So we begin to balance how we spread the projects out among consultants. And then there's also, how much do they know about the project? Maybe they did a phase one, so it makes sense that they do phase two, that sort of thing.
So let me ask you one other thing and then, and then I don't, well, I do see some other lights. But, so you mentioned, Bill, I think you mentioned that if we decide we want to go to another way of doing things or don't want to renew this way of doing things, actually, you've got to give a six-month notice to people. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think the six-month notice is, is for us to make sure that projects don't get off track. And particularly, when we're talking about the consent decree. You know, there, there are projects that are, there will be consent decree projects that will be designed out of this process. And so it is, because that's a multi-year, a multi-year process and we're only talking now about the first year dollars, because that, that, that time lag would, would push across into a second year, those, those projects that we would need in a, you know, in the first few months of the, of year two of this blanket authorization, we would need to have sufficient time in order to make sure.
So it's kind of an illusion that it's year to year, isn't it? Because by, yeah, because by definition, because of the projects, they're going to be renewed, right?
We would certainly come back and ask, and ask for renewal. That's, that's the intent, is to come back and ask for renewal.
Okay, alright.
Before we move on, just really quickly, I want to stress that those would be individual contracts with their own renewal periods. So I just want to make clear, there are multiple checks and balances.
Got that.
Yeah.
I got that. I was going on, on what Bill was saying, Chief, that a lot of these, they're not, they don't end at the end of a year. They're big projects, I got that. So it's kind of, and I was picking up on Councilman Gilbert's question. It's so, it's a bit of an illusion. It, we're almost, for a good reason, having to renew.
We have the SRF package that has a certain amount of money in it. And so the, the projects that come out of that one package will carry through until they're finished. If it takes five years to finish that particular project.
I got it.
That particular contract, then that, and it's the same 7.5 million that we're talking about that will carry through. In the next year, we'll have, if we have another SRF package, we could have another, another course of projects that we would come again for approval for.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you. I'm confused. Y'all done just confused me because I'm reading it, but what it's screaming is, we trying to ease a project past you. That's what it say to me. But I'm, I'd like to know, because I'm like Stacy, I don't like to be caught off guard. So what are you guys really trying to do?
Move projects along more efficiently.
So you say. So what are the professional services that need, that are needed to support the wastewater capital improvement projects that we can do in-house?
True, plenty.
Yeah, most of these projects are extremely design-intensive, labor-intensive, expertise-intensive, and we just don't have the staff to even come close to doing most of these. These are large projects to where we're, you know, some of them are a million-dollar design fee and that's a lot of time that, there's just no way we could do it in-house. That's just the way it is. Yeah, we'd have to hire, we can't hire the people we would need to do this kind of work. We don't pay enough for one thing, but we, we would take too many people for us to bring in and have to manage. That's why we have a program manager, so that they can do that work. They've done it before all over the country. We've done it now for about five years. We've learned a lot about it, but it's a tremendous amount of work to, to keep the thing moving so that we stay on top of our consent decree schedule and make sure we meet our marks, you know, that, that are laid out in the consent decree. If we don't do that, we start having fines put on us, that sort of thing. So that's where it's coming from.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm ignorant to the fact that it, so do you work for the city or you?
I do.
I mean, can you, I don't know.
I'm, I'm the Deputy Director of the Wastewater, Waste Resources Division.
Okay, I just was wondering, because I didn't see a badge, so I just wanted to know. Thank you.
It's in my wallet.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Berg?
Thank you, Chair. I just, out of, like even with the people sitting in the crowd, I don't know if they, in the audience, I don't know if they understand, even with the council hearing the questions that are going on, definitely want to move the city forward. Definitely understand that we do have wastewater, this consent decree, we do have issues. If you back up the agenda, we just spent, approved over 10 million dollars, so to say. And now it's another 7 million. And it's just questions, because people that are streaming, people that are in the audience are going to ask us, what's going on? What are, you know, and it's like, I can't explain it. I don't really understand. And you guys are up here really trying to put your best foot forward and explain to us what's going on, but it's just, to me, it's not clear to understand. And then with this, I know we approve a, off record, it's a paving budget that we approve and it can, things that can get paved really don't have to come in front of the council due to a scale that has been set up. You got, they can pave different areas and we don't really have a say-so. So when this 7.5 million is done, if it's one project, say one project costs 5 million dollars this year, that can be done without coming in front of us if we approve this today? Correct?
Yeah, the approval today is just allowing us, again, to pick from those firms.
Right.
To do the design for the project, which is a step in the process.
Right.
It's not the construction part.
I understand, and I think just the confusion I'm having, I can't speak for the council, is that once we say seven, once we say yes to this 7.5 million dollars, we have, it's nothing else that can really be said from our standpoint and we have to articulate it to constituents that are listening and that are reading these agendas. They want to know, hey, what are you guys doing with our money? What are you guys doing? How are you spending our money? And we have to be able to articulate it our best. And I just don't think it was done here today to, to understand what you guys are doing today with this.
I guess in a nutshell, instead of coming 15 times individually for this particular type of service, we're asking the council for X amount of dollars to use certain firms that meet criteria.
Right.
To move the process along faster.
At that point.
Because there's a process within us even getting it on the agenda, things like, it's just time, it's just time.
Just chiming in here really quick. So Councilman, the only other thing I'll add is that the projects that we're talking about executing with these dollars are laid out in the, the capital improvement documents that the council votes on every year during the budget. So it's timely that we're having this discussion right now about when and how projects get approved, which is different than how and when vendors get approved. So I just want to make that determination. There is a little bit of differentiation between what projects and what people. And, and so we were just talking back here, I think, and, and the council has made it clear that moving capital projects along faster is a huge priority to everybody on this, on the council. And so we're looking at how we do that better. And this is one way that we can do that, is we can create better procurement methods. So we estimate we can be able to shave off two to three months from implementation by going with a faster bidding strategy. And so we appreciate the feedback and we're happy to keep looking at it, tweaking it, take this into account and maybe meet with the, the Public Works chairperson to make sure there's some additional clarity and if there needs to be additional reporting mechanisms or thing like that that can be put in place to increase the competence and the transparency of the process, we're happy to take that into consideration. But I just wanted to make sure we laid all those facts out there in response to your question. My pleasure.
Good. Okay, Councilman Gilbert, did you want?
Just briefly, who wrote the specs for this? You just said there's, there's a lot to it. So how, and you had to get, you chose who you're going to choose. Who wrote the specs so you can choose who to, on this particular project?
Yeah, what we did was we created a request for, request for qualifications. And so we wrote that, our division wrote that in conjunction with purchasing. And we asked engineering consulting firms to submit their qualifications on these six different areas, and that's what they did. They sent us actual documents and we looked through them and, and grade each one. So there's really not a specification yet. What we're doing is just selecting, selecting consultants at this point. After this, after the consultant is selected, we negotiate with them a fee and a scope and a schedule and then they come up, they create specifications for projects, plans and specifications.
So you're saying the company, we're going to pay money to come up with the specs for us to do the work?
Right.
Nah, that ain't right.
I think, doesn't, I want to make sure that, what you're asking, who wrote the document that these companies responded to?
Yes, and then after, after, we just said that after you do it, then based on what they said, we gonna, based on specs off of that?
Right, there's, so there's, there's two pieces. The first one is, the document that these nineteen firms responded to was, it was an RFQ that was written by, by Public Works in conjunction with purchasing. So that was written by the city, submitted out publicly for the, for the professional services community to respond to. So the city wrote it, they responded.
So you're saying city, one of our engineer, one of our engineers wrote it, correct? Like yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
Multiple, multiple people from the city side wrote this and put it out there to say, this is the type of work that we're going to do. Moving forward, those individual projects, the city will specify what, what is the scope? What do we want the project to achieve? And what are some of the, what are some of the technical criteria that the project has to meet? In some cases, the consultants will help us develop some of that that we may use from a consultant and we may provide it to, to a different consultant. So for example, one of these subcategories has to do with, with master planning. So we may, we may take information, we may, a consultant may help us do some master planning on one side and then we may take that information and use that for some specific individual project criteria. So there are times whenever the consultants are helping us with planning and then there are other times when we're directing and we're saying, we want a project that does X. We need to, we need to increase capacity at this pump station and, and this is what it needs to do. We know we need to go from 30 million gallons a day to 45 million gallons a day at this pump station. And so defining those types of things, what types of pumps, what size of the lines, those, those types of things and how do you write in terms of that specification? That's what we're, that's what we would use this contract for, to pay them to, to write those in accordance with what we require.
So if they write them, help you write them, are they eligible to bid on them?
No, because these are professional services and they are writing construction documents. And the construction documents, we would put out to bid for a general contractor to bid upon.
And no affiliation with each other at all, correct?
No.
Alright, thanks.
Anything else? Uh, Councilman Oglesby?
Yes, are all these nineteen consultants here in Chattanooga? I mean, that's a lot of consultants and, you know. I just want to know, you know, that.
They don't all have offices here. They all generally have offices very close. Maybe some of them are Knoxville, Atlanta, but most of them, I think most of them have a Chattanooga office. And these are folks we've been dealing with, some of them for five years now and some of them are new. We have a couple of new consultants in this nineteen, in this group of nineteen that are from Chattanooga. And I couldn't tell you, or you, how many, I, I don't recall the proportion. Most of them are in Chattanooga, have significant presence in Chattanooga.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one last question if I can. Chief, are you still here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there you are. I appreciate the efficiency mindset of this and I, and I think I get it as a small business owner. We're working on something right now that we've got to get done and, so we're looking at every angle. So I do appreciate you taking that position. So my question is, could you theoretically paint us a picture of how this could work? And give us some kind of numbers? For example, and I don't, I don't, I don't mean right this second.
I was going to say, if you give us a little bit of time, we'd be happy to do some alternate timelines that show.
I believe this is on for next week. This is on for next week. So I'm trying to understand if we could look at maybe a model of an anticipated savings in time, moving the project along quicker? And then if you could maybe think about some sort of reporting mechanism that this council could ask for and see, that would help kind of lay this out and, and easy to understand terms?
Be our pleasure.
Okay, thank you. That's what I would personally like to see.
Yes, sir.
I can't speak for the rest of the council.
Anything else before I turn to Councilman Mitchell? Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to know why Eddie Taylor's here.
Um, I want to know why Eddie Taylor's here. He was asked to come to this meeting today, and I don't see anything on the agenda, and so, what? Got a date wrong? Oh, I'm sorry about that, Eddie. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that you've had to wade through all this, Eddie. Okay, let's move on. Anything else for Public Works? Let's move on to transportation. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a partnership agreement with Cameron Harbor South Lot One GP for Parkway Porch House located at eight zero one Riverfront Parkway, project number T eighteen zero zero one eight zero four, and to accept a contribution of fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents towards the cost of six pedestrian light poles, luminaries, conduits, and installation.
Councilman Oglesby? Okay, move on. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into an agreement with Cleanco Construction relative to contract number T seventeen zero zero six two zero one for construction services on Dodds Avenue associated with community development block grant sidewalk install repair in the amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents with a contingency amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and eighteen cents for a total amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven, ninety-three cents.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes, could you, uh, give me some clarity on this? So, when is this project gonna start? If it hasn't already? I haven't seen any indication it has. Okay, are these things timed lined out? You said possibly the earliest of May, which means it could be June or something else.
They have, they have, once we have a signed contract with them, they have ten days to start construction. So, as soon as we can get them on contract, they'll, we'll know the exact date.
Okay, thank you.
You good, Councilman?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the appointments of Corey, Jack Ward, and Andrew Matheson as special police officers unarmed for the Chattanooga Area Regional Transportation Authority to do special duties as prescribed herein, subject to certain conditions.
I see no lights, Madam Chair?
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into agreement with GeoStabilization International for construction services relative to contract number T sixteen zero zero four two zero one associated with construction services for soap stabilization along Grenada Drive, originally established by City Council action on May thirty, twenty seventeen, to increase the contract amount by ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars for a final revised contract amount of three hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and forty dollars in accordance with specifications as shown on statewide contract SWC one nine one.
We, uh, looked at this, and Mr. Attorney, the, the district isn't on here, and the best we could find out is it's my district. I have, and it could be Russell's, I'm not sure, because we're not sure if there's a Grenada on both sides of Brainerd Road. I don't have any questions. Uh, Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, I just had one for you. I hit the button quick enough. The security guard unarmed, what, what would they be doing at Carter?
I believe, and that's not, uh, really something that's seen that, first of all, in a customer property,
...map for our approach to the project, which I'll be happy to, we'll give you an update on that once we finalize the scope. Then we will, I think to me, it's important to, again, break it into two parts so that we're very deliberate. One is, what is the problem? And part of that'll be, as I mentioned before, I might take a little driving tour with some of you as council members who've seen particular sites that where your constituents have mentioned concerns. I'll do the same thing with folks in the development community who've got sites that they think that are good examples of hillside, maybe some not so. So I just try to first understand the landscape so that we can kind of, kind of common understanding of what the challenges are. Of course, also we involve not only in our department, but also LDO. They have a big role in this to storm water permitting, so we'll need to work closely with them, to learn from them, so that we have a good base of information about what's working, what's not currently. Then, I think, I would envision some kind of a technical report being produced and shared with you all. So before we get into the policy recommendation, I think it's important to first say, let's be sure we understand what the problem is and the different aspects of what we learned from our research. Then I think the second phase would be exploring some policies by looking at other cities, and I'm a big believer in learning from other places, because, you know, there's nothing like, I think, trying to learn without something new, without having experience can be a little dangerous sometimes, particularly when you're creating policies. So I think it's always good to look around, to see good examples in other places that seems to work well. So we'll do a little bit of peer review, and then we'll kind of come back and present some options that we think would make sense to staff. And again, we would share that with both citizens, as well as you as council, and development stakeholders, before we kind of get that to a final recommendation. So I think, again, two phases. First, analysis, some kind of a report. Then, second phase would be actually developing the policy.
John, let me ask you this. In looking at the three areas that are targeted, is it feasible to focus on one particular item individually and try to get that ahead?
Right.
Or do you plan on doing an overall comprehensive plan in utilizing all three of the target areas?
Since this is a policy, we'll probably look at all three. I will say, like, site clearing, there's very limited. Now, you can manage site clearing, like, if you're doing a PUD, like, sometimes I know some council members have asked for a condition saying no clearing of land, you know, you can certainly address it that way, but if somebody's already got their property zoned, there's not a lot we can do to limit site clearing without some other ordinance change. So I think some of the topics due to the nature of creating a policy will have more application than others. So, but again, since we're doing this at a policy level, I don't see any particular challenges with that.
Very good. Thank you, John. Chairman, you good? Very good. Any comments or questions from the council? All right, we look forward to you beginning work on that very soon.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, John. Moving into next week, Tuesday, April 10th, ordinances starting up with 6B. Are you good, Councilman? Ready to go? Do you want to skip? Okay. 6B, John, please.
Is it 6A or 6B?
I'm sorry, I'm showing 6B.
Okay.
Case number 2018-035.
Okay. What's A? Let's make sure I'm not missing a case, am I?
I don't show an A in my packet.
Okay, so maybe that's just something else.
Sure.
All right. Okay, so anyway, I'll give you an overview. If you could have the screen come down?
Dr. Burris, this will be a while, if you want to take a nap.
Our life is wasted.
If you want to go out and take a break or something, come back. Sorry, John, a little inside joke at strategic planning.
That just reminds you of Saturday night. I mean, that'd be really...
You should have been there, John. It was fun.
I missed it.
You missed it. You missed it.
Okay.
I thought you were planning something that was fun.
This is a request to rezonate a piece of land from R1 to RA3 to accommodate a detached small lot, single-family residential development consisting of six parcels. The property, as you can see here, looking on the slide, is located in the North Chattanooga Community, near the, at the corner of May and Ziegler Streets. Just to the south, about a block or two, is Cherokee Boulevard. You can see Spears over to the east, a couple, a couple blocks away. Give you the location reference, in terms of land uses, there is a church to the north, right across the street on the northern, it's the northern portion of Ziegler Street, but this particular block mostly fronts on May, and you can see the predominant character, here's, again, you look at the site here, it's pretty clear, flat here as well, but you can see that mostly single-family character in the area. Now, it does back up, if I go back up to this slide here, if you look at, on the back side of this property, which is to the west, so it's to the left side of this screen, on Harper Street, that is zoned RA currently. But if you look at the zoning for, I think I got it zoning map, here we go, you can see that most of the zoning of the area currently is R1. The site plan, as I mentioned, indicates six detached, single-family dwellings on small lots. Okay, you can see it fringes ranging from 40 to 45 feet. The plan, again, reviewing this request, we looked at, is a north shore plan, and it recommends urban, single-family residential infill. So that's, again, single-family detached. The RA zone, just again, the distinction between the two in the Form-Based Code, RA lets you do up to four units per lot. RD, with the ADU, accessory dwelling unit, you can do possibly two. So staff, in reviewing this, felt comfortable more with the RD, which is more similar in character to the R1 zoning on this block, we recommended RD2. That was our recommendation based on the plan and the zoning pattern and land use pattern of that block. At, so we're going to deny the RA3, recommend approval of the ERD2.
Hey, John, can I stop you real quick?
Yes.
If I may, I think Councilman Henderson's about to, to say the same thing, but I'm showing in my packet ERA2. ERD2. And no Star Wars jokes, please.
Well, I think that's the Planning Commission recommendation. I'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Y'all are jumping ahead.
I know, I'm sorry. We all, we're all kind of looking at each other going, okay.
But I'm laying out the story for you.
Okay.
We'll get you to that, to that finish line. That's right, we're on a journey together here at 4:30 in the afternoon. So, we recommended ERD2 because, again, we know that height is an issue in the neighborhood, so we recommended ERD2. At Planning Commission, there was some opposition. Their primary opposition had to do with height. So, not necessarily the RA zone, but the height. So, Planning Commission recommended approval of ERA2 to essentially allow them to do the small lot detached, single-family development, but limit it to two stories only. So that's how the ERA2 showed up in your packets.
Okay.
Does that...
That helps.
So, staff's recommendation is ERD2, and the 2 means the number, maximum number of stories. Planning Commission is recommending ERA, which again allows you to do the four units on a, and what I would recommend, as you think about this request, just note that it's, what will probably change is just not that block, right? Because you're, you're changing the zoning on the other part of this block. So what you approve here is probably going to carry down the rest of May Street. So just be aware that it's not just about this project, but what you intend is the future policy for the rest of the street.
John, I'm going to jump in here if I can real quick.
Yes.
I still think our packet is wrong.
Okay.
If, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, will you jump in here?
John, our staff version here says Ronnie Rothwell, R1 residential zone to ERA2 residential detached, should be ERD2, correct?
Yes, that part, yes.
Yes.
Staff would be ERD2, yes.
And is it residential?
And Planning Commission is RA2.
2, okay.
And residential, D2 is residential detached.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we need to make a change. We need to, we can make that change if...
I'll make a note of it.
Thank you. I feel a little vindicated, thanks, John.
Dang.
I know.
I thought I was on top of it.
I'm learning, John, I'm learning.
Okay, I'll make, make a note, my records for that. So the staff version is wrong. Okay.
Very good.
All those acronyms. Okay, next case, are you ready for the next case?
Actually, I've got a light on for Councilman Henderson.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see Mr. Rothwell here. So, when I met with him, and what he proposed was ERD2, I know, and then he came back later and said, "Well, I might want to do three stories," but as far as, we're throwing out the idea of three stories, period. Planning Commission and staff, we're throwing out that idea.
That's right.
Which I'm good with.
Yep.
The community's good with. And I lean in favor of the ERD2, so that we keep these residential detached homes throughout the rest of this block, which is what the community desires to see. So, if I understood the attorney correct, the staff version will say ERD2, correct?
Yes.
So we could adopt the staff version next week.
Yes.
We'll make that change.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Thank you, John, I appreciate the indulgence.
I like that, that was good. I like to know that my chairs keep me on my toes.
Love planning and zoning.
Okay.
All right, item C, please.
Okay, this is a request to rezonate a property, let me get my notes correct, from R1 residential to R2 residential zone in order to bring two existing non-conforming duplexes, let me go, I gotta get the right slide here, to, to compliance. They were already developed and built as duplexes, they just lost their grandfather due to electricity being turned off for 100 days, and so the applicant is requesting to rezonate so they can complete the renovation of these two properties. It is located next to the Antioch Church, you see there, and just to the upper right of this yellow, of the yellow square, you see, they're the ones that are redeveloping this property on Plumland Road, again, to, I think it's part of their, their work as a church. We look, because, you know, of course, on our end, from a planning side, we look at the land use side of it. Currently, if you look at the zoning map, let me pull, here's, you can see the site, here's the existing buildings we're talking about, the two duplexes. You can see there's a drive in between them that serves as a connection to provide parking to the rear of these properties. Again, you see that the block is predominantly single-family nature. Here, there's the church, the adjacent church. You can, again, see in the zoning map, the whole area is zoned R1. And so, in looking at this, we look at, again, the zoning pattern, right now, it's all R1, there is no R2 in the immediate vicinity. The plan, I love this, this is old, y'all, this is 20 years. Basically shows this as being single-family residential for this location, so based on the zoning of the area and the use on the block and the plan recommendations, staff recommended to deny. At Planning Commission, let me go up to, there was no opposition, there were some representatives from the community that did come to the meeting, and their main basis for supporting it was to make sure that there be no parking in the front, and they had some concerns about cars being parked along the street in the front and wanted to see rear parking. So after hearing staff's report, Planning Commission found that it used to be compatible because you do have adjacent church nearby, institutional use, but subject to the parking being located to the rear of the buildings. So, staff recommended deny, mainly from the precedent-setting perspective. Planning Commission recommend approval, subject to parking being located to the rear.
Very good, thank you, John. I do see Councilman Gilbert's light on. If you would, please.
North Branded Council did go out and look at these duplexes, and they did say that they are for it, but John is correct, that they want to make sure that the parking, first of all, make sure it's a driveway, that's just dirt, so it's not a driveway, so make sure they have concrete or whatever asphalt going leading up there. The second driveway to the left, I still don't know if that goes to that duplex or goes to the house next door. So we're going to find that out. And also, they're supposed to be subdividing the two properties, because right now, they're just on one plot, so they're supposed to be subdividing the two.
That's right. That's one thing they'll have to do to get it in conformance, is they'll have to subdivide it and get a, basically, a special permit from Border Zoning Appeals. As I recall, I think the lot size is a little smaller than what you typically allow a duplex, so they'll need to get an exception for that.
Say that one more time?
Yeah, for the, because of the lot size, you know, when you split it in two, it's going to be less than, I think, the minimum you'd normally need for a duplex, is each unit's going to have two houses, two, two units, and so they'll have to probably get a special exception from Border Zoning Appeals as well to do that.
Okay.
Which is a tool we set up for that purpose.
Do we know for sure they have to get a variance because the neighborhood...
I'll confirm, that's my understanding, the last I talked with staff, I'll, I'll confirm.
Yeah, I'd like to know that before next week, before we vote on it. And no parking on the street, and I did speak with a young man that left a few minutes ago in transportation, he's going to get with Blight, to see if we can put no parking at that area, because right now, this is very, very narrow street, like a T-model street back in the day. So if you put, if they start parking on the side of this, of the duplex, you have to go all the way around, and it's going to cause traffic problems. So, that's another thing I have to find out by next week to see if that's going to be clear. And also, you're right, the only reason why we're okay, and it's because, if we're okay it, it's because the Chamberlain's Home did the same similar thing with duplexes. This is right next to the church, the church owns the property, and that's the only reason why I'm even considering it, because of that reason, because that's a downzone area. So I want to make sure that's on the books. Thank you, John.
Are you good, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, John, if no other lights are on, if we'll move to item D, please.
Okay. This is another request to actually convert a house to a duplex. This is in the East Lake community, it's right at the base of Missionary Ridge on 17th Avenue. These, my notes here are wrong. Here we go. They want to, again, to rezonate us from R1 to R2 to accommodate conversion of a house to a duplex. The property is located at 3807 17th Avenue. The site, as I mentioned before, is currently used as a single-family dwelling. You do have mostly single-family lots in the area, and this was included in a larger area that was downzoned after the East Lake Plan was conducted. Here is the site itself, you can see it's a sloping slight site that slopes down from 17th Avenue, you see the home here, so basically, it's kind of like a vertical, they'll have the top unit be one unit, and then the underside will be a secondary unit. They will be accessing the site from the rear, but you can see, again, it's mostly single-family bungalows on this block. The zoning is all R1. You can see here, again, the site plan will be coming off the rear alley with a rear parking for the two units. This is an illustration from the Rossville Community Plan, and again, recommends detached, single residential unit for this area. So based on the plan recommendations and the existing zoning pattern, we recommend a denial of the request. At Planning Commission, there was no opposition. Planning Commission found that the proposed use is compatible with the development form of the area, so they recommend approval due to the use being compatible with the development form of the area. I will say, one thing that did come up, and this, this will be a familiar topic, as you recall, we used to have a special permit for duplexes, which we really only had approved one time, and I think it was in Highland Park. And after multiple cases where it kind of, it went through Planning Commission and gotten approved, and then denied at council, we decided, well, if it's really not working to it, let's remove it. So I hate to bring up an old topic, but again, I will say this, this is another reflection of the changing housing needs in the community, I think you're going to see more of this, where folks are wanting to create more housing options for folks. So you're going to hear the word ADU quite a bit, which is accessory dwelling unit, other things like this, where folks are trying to convert homes into multiple units to accommodate Chattanooga's housing needs. So, one tool we had created, this is a while ago, was a special permit. Planning Commission did mention that, I don't know if, Councilman Ledford, you were there as well?
Yeah, if I can jump in, if you don't care.
Sure, go ahead.
If I remember the case correctly, this actually was, I guess, grandfathered in, so to speak, and some renovations had been done to make this a better-looking property and bring it up to standards, and I believe they just simply lost it because they fell out of utilities?
That was the other one.
That was the other one?
Yes.
But this one is being worked on?
That's right, this is actually being, is proposed to be converted.
Converted, oh, yeah, that's right. And then this one does not have an entrance from the, yeah, you're right, and again, from the top to the bottom, it does not have an entrance at all internally.
Right.
Right.
So, anyway, so, so, again, staff recommend denial, Planning Commission recommend approval. And again, I would just note that whatever you do there, I mean, it's, you are setting some precedent.
And one of the comments I remember, John, if I may, Planning Commission was the, the need for creating affordable housing.
That's right.
Options for families, and, and that was a major, I'll just leave it at that, it was a major topic, conversation topic.
Yep.
I do have some lights, if you, if you're okay to take questions.
Sure.
Very good. You're next. Councilwoman Burris, please.
So, I want to pick up on what John said, there was a lot of discussion about duplexes and R1s and all of that. And what happened is, there were a number of areas that were downzoned or trying to be protected from, actually protecting property owners that had bought in R1. And so, Russell's not here right now, but what we, what we did was several things. First of all, if you do this, if we do this, right or wrong, it's spot zoning. All right. And one of the things that we had a lot of input on and feedback from the whole community was, how do we know when we buy in certain areas that our property is protected if we choose to buy it in our one area? Particularly in the older areas where people are redoing homes and stuff and rehabbing, there seems to be no protection for the R1. We're in turn doing spot zoning. So the feeling back then was, if you're going to downzone, and if you're going to get rid of exceptions, then we need to keep the integrity of the area. And is this what we're talking about, affordable housing? Does it turn into something that is not what was intended by our good intentions? And so you have to be real careful about that. I think everybody agrees we need affordable housing. Unfortunately, all landlords don't act, and I'm not talking about this case, I don't know these people. Sometimes landlords don't act in the best interest, and so affordable housing is meant to be or turned into substandard housing. And what happens to a neighborhood then? Because people, people's homes are the biggest investment they're going to make in many cases, particularly people that are finally making it, coming up and buying homes in these other areas. And so, I think we have, we got to do more thinking than just, should it be, should we do this carte blanche? That's all.
Very good points, thank you. Councilwoman Burris. Chairman Mitchell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tell me how this works, John.
Yes.
Everything you said points to leaving it R1. Somebody used some term called affordable housing, which is really means, let's face it, it means affordable for the person to build onto it so they can make some more money.
Mm-hmm.
So, how does the Planning Commission go from what you said to recommend approval? What, what goes on in the process that somehow they cross that, and it's a chasm? How do they do that? And, and, and what, how does that work? Help me, help me with it.
Well, I mean, clearly, you got to look at a whole number of factors, right? One is the plan, zoning, I guess, particularly, there's a lot, actually, there's several cases, and this is on several where, this is followed right after the Antioch case. And I think the idea of, if you're trying to encourage more housing diversity, what's a tool to do that? One tool, I'm not saying it's the only and right tool, R2 lets you at least do two units on a, I think that also factored in, there's no opposition. The fact that no opposition came to the meeting, was opposed to it, said, "If we're trying to at least get some housing mix somewhere," again, I'm interpreting or assuming that's what the thought was, but that was by, to take, I mean, Councilman Ledford was there as well.
You're right, part of the conversation, and I'm just recanting, not a position by any means, but part of the conversation is that, is the, the growing need and options. The Planning Commission, I can, I can think accurately is, is looking at R2 as a tool to address the needs that we're all concerned about in that regard, so, and again, that's just recanting some conversation.
Okay, well, two things, if I could piggy, piggyback, Councilperson Burris, comments. I don't understand where the Planning Commission gets off. This is going to be fun not being chair next year. I don't understand where the Planning Commission gets off deciding that we need some housing options in a neighborhood that has purposely decided they don't want those options. I don't understand that. Two, if you look at the lot, obviously, most of the lots around it are vacant lots, so what happens to the 300-foot notification? Who actually got those notifications to drum up some opposition? So, I just...
I hear you.
I don't get it. I don't get it at all.
Very good.
And I, and I'm going to yield, because, you know, it's District 7, so I've got several things in District 2 to be concerned about, but it's, I don't get it.
Thank you, Chairman Mitchell, I appreciate your comments to the, to the council, and I will move to Councilman Oglesby.
No, and that's a point well-taken, because we got to look at these also, not just District 7, but the ramification it could have in other areas, so I really appreciate your comments. This particular location is in an area not well-populated, and it could set an undue standard that we don't want to have to follow up on. And I see this as not being favorable for long-term circumstances. Overall, referring back to my colleague, Councilman Mitchell, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out, because I'm very familiar with that area, it's, it's not a very safe type of area, and I can see this being, if rezoned, it could create some undue hazards that wouldn't be good in the long-term effect of this area. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much for everyone's comments, I appreciate that very much. I'm seeing no more lights, so if there aren't any more questions on this item, we will move to item E. John?
Sure. This is a request to rezonate, actually, there's two of them that go together, this is in the Jefferson Heights community, to rezonate from manufacturing, M1 manufacturing zone to URD, Urban Residential Detached. First one, for this particular item, is to, they're requesting that zoning to develop four single-family detached dwellings on a currently M1-zone property, again, you need RD-zone to be able to do that. These were not included originally in the Form-Based Code study because they were originally owned by the railroad at the time, that's why they were excluded at the time the original study was done.
If I may, Mr. Chair, you don't have anything on this.
Oh, my bad. Here you go.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, my apologies, I was reading on it, thank you for...
You're just rolling.
So this is the site here, where they're proposing to do four, I'll show you the site plan real quick. Again, you can see, here's the site right there, straight ahead. It is a low-lying area, and it's part of the opposition concerns we received at the Planning Commission meeting related to flooding. Here you can see some current houses being developed across the street, detached, small lot, there's looking further up, Madison Street across the park. Let me show you the site plan. You can see here, they're showing the four parcels that would be subdivided to accommodate the RD development. Staff, and looking at this, and again, we looked at the zoning pattern, we also looked at the plan recommendations, and the plan recommends a mix of housing, and we, if you look at the predominant form, it's mostly detached, and if we're trying to get a mix, staff felt like RA would actually give you some more options to mix the housing typology around the park, which, which again, creates more diversity. So staff recommend approval, actually, of RA instead of RD, the RD request, that was our recommendation. At Planning Commission, there was opposition, and the concerns primarily had to do with flooding, also just want to make sure they're minimizing the number of curb cuts coming out onto the street. So just note that it's R, it's zone M1 now, so this would be actually a downzone to a residential-type zone. So... be actually a downzone to a residential-type zone. Um, so, planning commission concurred with staff's recommendation to approve RA3. Um, now, note that as far as flooding, and I've, I've got Dallas, can you help me if I miss, miss say something here, but, you know, they have to, when they go through the permitting process, they have to demonstrate there would be no off-site floodwater impacts from that development, is that correct?
As far as the stormwater.
Yeah.
So, I think the will of this number is that, that 25, before, yeah, but above.
Right.
But with that being said, there's concern about not any problems added to that, because it does flood quite extensively in that park, right across the street from this area that's gonna be developed. And right now, you have citizens already complaining of flooding in, in...
You already have citizens complaining about flooding in, on their property now. So, the main concern is no flooding adding to that problem.
Um, but again, as zone now, M1, just to be clear, they can pull a permit today. It'd be the same stormwater process, if, correct?
Correct.
So, I know, it's, it's a tough one, uh, but, um, uh, you heard the basis for our recommendation, I'm sure there'll be some opposition here to just, in response to that request.
Very good. Thank you, John, thank you, Councilman Oglesby. I'm seeing no further lights.
Um, the second case, again, is right next door, this is on, um, Madison Street, it's for one single-family dwelling. It's a wedge property, triangle property, currently zoned M1. You can see, you've already got some houses to the south of this property. They're wanting to go to RD2, uh, to accommodate one single-family dwelling. Staff recommendation, let me go up ahead here, uh, 'cause all the other stuff's pretty much the same, was again, RA3 to get some diversity in the area. Uh, there was opposition for the same mention, reasons we mentioned before, uh, and planning commission can concur with staff's recommendation for RA3.
Councilman Oglesby?
No, it's more carryover from the previous.
Very good, thank you, sir. Seeing no further lights.
Okay.
John G., please.
All right, this is a request to rezon, uh, this is at, if you know, Central and Main Street, you see kinda just to the left-hand side of the screen, uh, this is in that area. This is to request rezon a piece of property that's currently vacant from R3, it's currently in R3 to RTZ, to accommodate four detached, single-family dwellings. Um, as, as I mentioned before, the site is currently vacant, I mean, here you can see a picture of the site, there is a single-family dwelling just to the west of the site. Across the street, you do have some commercial and industrial to the north, uh, but I would say the block on the south side is predominantly single-family. And you can see there's a church nearby as well. Again, the zoning is R3, um, you do have some UGC zoning to the south, um, and I believe the, the closest RTZ is about a little more than a half-mile away on 1608 13th Street, but RTZ is quite frequently used if somebody wants to do a small lot, detached, single-family residential development. So, they're requesting that zone to accommodate those four single-family dwellings. Let me show you the site plan. Here's the, the site plan showing the four dwellings with parking in the rear. They'll use a public alley in the rear to, um, access the properties. So, staff, um, recommended approval, um, felt like the zoning was actually a downzone going from R3 to RTZ. Um, the, now, the intensity residential is a little more than what's currently in the area, but it's less intensive than you would have in an R3-type development, so we recommended approval. Um, there was opposition at the planning commission meeting, I think the main concern was just opportunity to meet with the applicant. The neighbor next door requested a deferral to have time to meet with the applicant, um, the applicant responded, they'd been trying to reach the, the, the neighbor and hadn't had an opportunity to kinda connect. So, planning commission felt that there's probably a good opportunity for them to meet between planning commission and city council, uh, and given it was a downzoning, they recommend, they concur with staff's recommendation to approve.
Very good, thank you, John. Councilman Burris, do you have anything you'd like to add to this one? Okay. John, you are correct in the, uh, that the opposition was strictly in a communication.
Yes, right.
Um, that needed to happen, and I believe that is moving forward. I kinda looked at this and, uh, followed up a little bit, and I believe that is happening.
Okay.
We'll see. Very good, thank you, John.
All right, the last one is a, is a zoning ordinance text change. Um, I'm not gonna try to explain all of this slide, uh, but essentially, um, currently, RTZ, um, when we first created the zone, it was predominantly applied in suburban areas, it was where most of your townhouses are being developed. And so, the concern was not having multiple townhouses with, with driveways fronting along a public street. So, we had this 40, 30-foot, let me look at my notes here, I believe it was a, originally it was a 30-foot setback. Actually, actually, I think it was 40. Um, well, now, we're starting to see, and the good thing is actually townhouses putting parking in the rear, which is something we wanna encourage. Um, but if, if they're putting parking in the rear, there's no need to have that deeper setback. So, this zoning text amendment change allows them to have the same setback a single-family of 25 feet, as long as the parking is in the rear. So, that's what this zoning text amendment does. It allows, if you're reloading your parking, you can have a 25-foot setback for your townhouse.
Very good. John, I am seeing no lights on this item.
Okay.
We will move into resolutions.
Alright.
Planning. Item F., please.
Okay, this is, um, there's two, these, there's two items that relate together. One is to abandon a PUD, the other is to, um, basically create a new PUD for the same location. The homeowners association, uh, for Windward Cove, applied to RPA, um, to basically abandon their PUD and amend it by adding on a, let me show you the, uh, here is the current PUD boundary. Uh, you see there, outlined in the dashed blue line. They would add, if you kinda see that little finger off of this, let me see if I can get a better illustration here.
Use your pointer.
It is not, okay, I thought I had a better illustration. All right.
Another inside 130 joke.
Golly.
We had a bunch today, John, you missed them.
You missed them. Well, you see, sort of the little finger coming off here, uh, you probably, you can't see what I'm pointing, but you, if you see, that kinda looks like a long, rectilinear, kind of heavily dashed, uh, noted line. They would be adding that as a community lot. Um, Council Smith can tell you about that, he worked long and hard to, to, uh, working with the community to get that added to the PUD. Um, there has been some communication issues with, between the HOA and the residents, um, we, we weren't sure if we could take the case. Um, the city attorney can't tell us, we, we had him confirm that there was actually a valid meeting and notification, we had enough basis to, to take an application. Um, so, we, you know, we can't get into what communication did or did not happen between the residents and the HOA, we just look, have to look at the application on its own merits. Um, so, staff recommended approval, um, since it was adding that community lot, adding more community space. Um, there was no opposition, actually, sorry, there was opposition.
There was opposition, yes.
Sorry, my bad, missed it. There was significant, uh, there, again, and the opposition had to do with whether or not the board had the authority to take this action. And we, we know that we, based on the information we had of staff and upon advice of our city attorney, we, we, we would need to process the application. So, we did, we recommended approval, planning commission concurred with staff's finding to approve the PUD. Um, so, I'll leave it at that.
John, before I go to Vice Chairman Smith, can I have you go back a couple slides and just make sure the council didn't have any questions about this slide here, where the location was, 'cause it's kinda, it's kinda difficult to see on this.
Lot 45.
Lot 45, right. Just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that, since the way it was, just black and white drawing, okay. Very good, thank you. Vice Chairman Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This actually covers, uh, item G. as well, I think we really jumped ahead. Do you wanna go ahead and have that read into the record, and then I'll ask my question?
Sure. Item G. is a request to approve, uh, basically, a PUD, um, per, as per plat, plat book 58, 21, and, let me, let me leave up the actual ordinance agenda, and I'll read it just from that. Give me a second. Um, 27, 2018-037 Windward Cove Homeowners Association, special exceptions permit, a resolution authorizing a special exceptions permit for a residential planned unit development for properties located at the 4,400 block of Webb Road and the 4,200 blocks through the 4,500 blocks of Sailmaker Circle.
Okay, got it. All right, um, can you go back to where you actually had the blue outline, just for one second, please? Okay. So, when you say adding the, uh, community lot, we're not actually adding it, meaning creating it, we're just including it into the existing PUD.
Yes.
Okay, so, we're, we're eliminating, well, we're eliminating the existing PUD, we're creating a new one, and the new PUD includes what already exists as community space.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, back to the black and white. Okay. Lot 22. Is lot 22 currently the size I'm seeing here, or does lot 22 end at that diagonal line looking like it's cutting it in half currently?
To my knowledge, it's the diagonal only currently. I saw it on the screen here.
Okay. So, what is being proposed is eliminating the PUD, creating a new PUD to take into the existing community lot, or the community space, lot there in 45, and then extending lot 22, almost, I wouldn't say double, but, but what looks like doubling lot 22 to make it a squared-off lot.
Yes.
Okay. And that, is that how it's written, or is there a way to keep lot 22 and the existing lot 45 as per the diagonal line, uh, consistent in the current wording?
Um, yes, and I'm working out with my staff to see if there's an alternative version that would accomplish that, if that's what council so, so desires.
But it would have to be an alternative, an alternate version in order to do that.
It'd be a change to what was submitted.
Okay. So, here's what I would like to see. Uh, I don't have an issue with abandoning the PUD, I don't have an issue with submitting a new PUD. I have an issue with extending lot 22 and taking up that other triangle of what is already community space. So, I would like to see an alternate version that abandons the PUD, extends the existing PUD to take in the community space, but leaves lot 22 at its current size and leaves lot 44 at its current size.
Understood.
All right. Thank you, nothing further, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Smith. Seeing no other lights, we will move on to our South Broad District Study, John?
Yes, you were provided, Eric Myers did a great job, um, kinda giving you a, a pretty lengthy overview of the plan. I do have some slides, it just reminds you of the scope of, of the plan. But we had a, um, as he indicated, I think, at his presentation, we already had our community meeting at that point, at the DRC, um, and that we received a lot of positive, favorable feedback, answered some questions. I think that the biggest confusion dealt with, um, what this map means, which is an illustrative plan versus the, the framework. In terms of policy, which we are adopting is the framework. Uh, the illustrative plan just shows one potential of probably 100 different outcomes. This is just a visualization tool that tells you what this framework plan could produce over time. So, I think, uh, that was the biggest thing, is helping the public understand the difference between the two. Um, planning commission, recommended approval, um, staff, our staff has reviewed the plan, we, we're, we're fine with it. So, your action next week could be just adopting this as a plan. I know if Councilman Oglesby has any, anything you'd like to add, but we're, that's all I've got.
No, we'll be delving into that. A little bit more doing economic and community development, but no, this is a, a great plan.
Very good. John, I'm seeing no other items, does any, any other comments, or, oh, I do see a light now. Vice Chairman Smith, please.
That's okay, thank you, sir, I was jumping ahead either. Uh, Mr. Chair. John, sorry, backing up, just one other thing I wanna make sure that is included in that alternate version, is that, uh, the current lot, 45, uh, that there is a condition that that remains community space.
Got it.
Meaning open space, undeveloped as it is.
I used some language from my prior.
Very good, thank you.
Good, Chairman?
Good, thank you.
You got it. Okay, now, seeing no other business on our Planning and Zoning Committee Agenda item, I wanna thank the council for their input and their comments today. Uh, it's good to have everyone back, and we will move to our Economic and Community Development next.
I'd like to call to order today's Economic and Community Development Committee. Thank you. Uh, what are we gonna do? We have three topics of discussion. I wanna move first to the MLK Boulevard Construction Mitigation Program, and then to the Tubman Matching Grant. So, team, you got the floor.
Uh, good afternoon. You know what, hold, hold on. Uh, you, you got a timeframe you have to deal with? I'm, I'm a reasonable man. If, if you don't mind, let's just do the South Broad, that, that would be an excellent follow-up to what Chairman Ledford just finished with, and then we'll ease on into, we'll close out with, with the really good stuff, okay?
My apologies, I was jumping ahead.
No, no, that's, I, I flipped the script, so, uh, that, that's an Erskine thing.
No, and I, I just, I wanna say, Mr. Chairman, our, our faces were, were not, were not, oh gosh, I wish John could go, it was John realizing that he had, you know, messed up.
That's very polite. That was, that was very polite, but the face I saw, I would not try to explain in public, okay? So, let, let's move on to the South Broad Development.
Yes, sir.
While everybody's happy.
Yes. So, again, um, I, I, I think, you know, we were excited about, oh, again, the plan has several key concepts that will hopefully guide the future redevelopment of that area. You know, there is the potential for a rezoning study down the road, we, we got some homework to do before we move that forward, so we're gonna have some stakeholder meetings to see if, if folks are ready to move, take that next step. Um, so, that's part of our work. And as, as I understand it, um, you know, uh, some of the implementation recommendations in the plan, looking at different tools to help facilitate the redevelopment of that area, I'm sure we'll be exploring those, uh, with different departments that have different roles to play in that, 'cause I know there's a lot of infrastructure-related items associated with that. So, really, the fun work starts now, and so, we appreciate, again, Councilman Oglesby, your support in championing the plan. Um, it's been really a team effort, again, I'll also come in and clear the Urban Chad New Design Studio that led this project, um, did excellent work, and, uh, we look forward to continuing to partner in the future.
That's it?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay. Well, I just wanna mimic what you just said, that, uh, this, this is a plan that has been implemented by a total community effort. So, this is not anything other than the community came up with. Uh, it's something that, uh, has been committed, that's not gonna sit on the shelf. Once it's approved, we're gonna start the process to make sure things happen within the constraints of, uh, our authority. Uh, thank you, John, for all your efforts, and, uh, this is something gonna be very exciting for our city, including the, uh, uh, mixed-income housing, entertainment district, and how it's gonna impact Howard. So, uh, let the work begin.
That's right.
Should it be approved.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Now, the MLK Construction Mitigation Program.
All right, thank you. Um, so, let's talk a little bit about some, uh, construction mitigation. Uh, so, in our Office of Economic Development, um, we have, uh, received word from, uh, some of our businesses in the MLK corridor, um, about the need for, to take on some mitigation steps. I'm having a little bit of trouble with the clicker here, let's see here. Okay. Um, so, as an overview, what we would like to do, uh, from the Office of Economic Development, is to transfer, uh, $119,000 that we have, uh, currently in an economic development fund, over to the Industrial Development Board, uh, for the support of small business programs, uh, namely, a construction mitigation program for businesses that are located in the MLK cor, in the MLK Boulevard corridor. Although there's a long-term economic benefit of improving public infrastructure, like doing the, um, uh, fixing MLK Boulevard right there at Miller Park, and then also doing the repaving work, uh, that we've currently, uh, been working on for the past 30 days on MLK Boulevard, obviously, there is an economic impact that comes along with that, reducing the roads, uh, the reducing MLK Boulevard, uh, the, doing the lane rightsizing obviously makes it more pedestrian-friendly, and it has a, um, that, of course, makes it more friendlier for people to frequent the businesses, um, along MLK Boulevard. But in the short term, though, during these construction projects, uh, sometimes there can be a negative impact on the businesses that are affected, um, just in terms of, because of all of the construction and the street closures, uh, a lot of your normal shoppers or the, the normal people who would frequent the businesses don't have access, uh, to the businesses, or choose not to frequent the businesses. businesses, or choose not to frequent the businesses because they don't want to deal with the inconvenience of navigating the construction. Um, so to give a little background, the only time that the, the Burke Administration has previously engaged in construction mitigation was a couple of years ago, when we did mitigation services for businesses in the Wilcox Corridor. And that was because the Wilcox Tunnel was closed for approximately six months. Um, and so, as a result of that, during that process, we heard from small businesses, uh, on both sides of the tunnel about the impact that the, uh, tunnel improvements were having on their businesses. And so they, you know, reached out to the city and said, you know, hey, is there anything that the city can kind of do to mitigate, uh, our, our lots of, our loss of traffic, our loss of revenue, uh, during these big construction times? And so, um, after that, and in response to that, and during that process, city staff began to explore and to investigate mitigation projects and mitigation programs across the country. And so we decided to, to develop a program, uh, that would provide for mitigation services in the event that there were businesses that were impacted, uh, by long construction projects resulting in street closures. So our internal process to this point has been that we typically don't do mitigation, uh, unless the, 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 the impact area is going to be ninety days or more, um, which is why we didn't do mitigation during the Big Dig, for example, um, over in the St. Elmo area, uh, last summer. Um, and the other thing to remember is that the purpose of the mitigation effort is not to make a business financially whole, uh, during the event of major construction, but it's a way for the city to, to let businesses know, particularly small businesses know, that we feel their pain and that we're understanding of, uh, the challenges that they face, uh, during those tough times. Because oftentimes, um, for a small business, these construction mitigation times, when there's severe construction, can really impact the bottom line of a small business. So our mitigation program, um, allowed the, it, it currently allows for grant of up to a thousand dollars for affected small business, and we define a small business as a business that has, uh, a hundred employees or less. Um, so these programs are not meant for, you know, large businesses, like large, like large corporate businesses, but they are, uh, definitely tailored to, to our small businesses. And then in addition to that, um, in addition to the one thousand dollar grant that a business would be, um, uh, eligible for, uh, we also can do some increased outreach, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, that means going and doing, uh, business-to-business, door-to-door canvassing to let businesses know about these, uh, about the one thousand dollar grant. It means calling the businesses. It means having meetings to take business owners through the process of how to apply for the grant. Um, one of the things that we learned, uh, a couple of years ago during the Wilcox mitigation was that there were a lot of small business owners that simply didn't know, um, that weren't very tech savvy, they weren't very computer savvy, and they needed assistance in helping and applying for grants, and in going through the process of submitting the required documentation and paperwork, uh, that is necessary to receive a grant. Um, in addition to that, we can do some, uh, promotional services and some advertising, uh, that we would do, uh, sort of for the entire, uh, MLK district, sort of like what we did with, uh, the Wilcox District a couple of years ago, in that we offer promotional services that would benefit kind of the MLK corridor collective as opposed to an individual business. And then, of course, we make sure that we'll have, uh, project liaison, that's Eric Booker from Public Works and Eric Asbo, uh, from CDOT, um, people who can speak to, uh, the construction process and who can actually have influence, um, over how we actually do, uh, construction. So for example, we had a meeting with the business owner, uh, I don't think that he would mind me saying his name, uh, but Seth Champion, the owner of Champies, came in. Uh, we had a meeting with him. He was concerned that a lot of the repaving work, for example, would impact him, would be right in front of Champies, uh, during the weekend, which is his busiest time. And so we worked with, um, uh, our staff to see that if we could schedule, break up the construction along MLK Boulevard so that it wouldn't impact him during his busiest time. And so we tried to move that, move as much of it to Thursday and Sunday as possible so it wouldn't impact his, uh, Friday and Saturday tra- uh, traffic. Um, and then, of course, we have a website that we've already set up, uh, through the city's, uh, website, um, that would, uh, provide information about detours. Um, and so, again, many of the merchants in the MLK Boulevard corridor, uh, asked the city to consider implementing, um, a mitigation program. Um, this started when, uh, MLK Boulevard was actually closed during the Miller Park construction. So this, this actually started, um, where, uh, between, when the, when Miller, when MLK Boulevard was closed between Market Street and Georgia Avenue, um, as part of that Miller Park construction. Um, that, of course, that construction period lasted one hundred and twenty days, so it went well over our ninety-day internal policy for what types of projects, um, are eligible for construction mitigation. And then in addition to that, uh, the same businesses that were impacted by closure of the Boulevard at Miller Park were also continued, continued to be impacted by the forty-five day construction, uh, that involved the repaving and lane right sizing along MLK Boulevard. We actually still have some businesses that are still being impacted as well, uh, because, as you know, Georgia Avenue is now closed, uh, between, uh, MLK Boulevard and Patton Parkway, and then I anticipate that there will be some additional construction along Patton Parkway as well. These are the program requirements, uh, for receipt of the grant, uh, its completion and submission of the written application, which is online, uh, along with the submission of the, uh, required attachments. That includes the City of, uh, City of Chattanooga Business License, the Hamilton County Business License, a state certificate of existence, if available, all businesses don't have that, um, a completed IRS Form W nine, uh, and a signed statement detailing the negative impact of the construction, uh, on the business. And the reason, um, going back to and sort of keeping in line with what was required when we did the Wilcox mitigation, um, we, I think in the original, when the, the, the Wilcox mitigation originally happened, um, there were staff who also asked business owners to submit proof in terms of receipts, uh, that could sort of, uh, show a loss, uh, from one time period to another. Um, but what we found during that Wilcox program, uh, program was that there were a lot of business owners that simply didn't retain the records to show that. Um, and so, um, in, in an effort to, to, to offer assistance to those business owners who may not have been tech savvy or organized enough to keep, uh, those records, we asked for a written statement, uh, that would be signed by each business owner that basically detailed, um, what the impact was during the construction phase. Um, and then, uh, so we have a mitigation map that's available online, and then, of course, you must be a for-profit business with a hundred or fewer employees. Um, and then in addition to this, um, well, this just details the thousand dollar grant that is eligible, uh, to each business. Um, and then, so basically, what we're asking is that, uh, the city council allow us to use the a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that's currently in an economic development account, allow us to transfer that over to the Industrial Development Board, and then the Industrial Development Board would go through the process of awarding grants to businesses who apply. Um, we anticipate that there will be somewhere between twenty, uh, about twenty to twenty-one businesses that will apply for some sort of mitigation, um, and so we, um, have already opened that application process up, and we've already begun to, to, to see applications come in. Um, we are also be, going to be having a meeting, uh, up in City Hall, uh, on April the eleventh, inviting business owners who may not feel comfortable doing the application, uh, on their own, uh, inviting those business owners to bring their required documents into City Hall so that we can work with them one-on-one, uh, and get them set up, uh, so that we can make sure that they, they apply. Um, and then in addition to that, some of the other things that are offered during the mitigation program for businesses in the corridor, uh, include promotion efforts. So I believe during the Wilcox phase a couple of years ago, there was a business fair, uh, that was organized by one of the business owners in the Wilcox area, uh, where there was actually sort of a, a fair or, uh, a festival that encouraged people to come spend money at the businesses, uh, uh, in the Wilcox Boulevard corridor. Um, businesses could get help with paid advertising. Um, of course, you know, paid advertising, whether it's print, radio, internet, if we did, uh, any paid advertising that we do, we're gonna do for the businesses as a collective. Uh, so we would be doing, uh, we would be helping with the businesses as a collective of the, uh, MLK corridor. Any business that wanted, say, to spend a thousand dollars on Facebook advertising, for example, we would simply do a one thousand dollar grant to the business, um, and then if they wanted to use that for their own advertising, they could. Um, and then in addition, uh, we've already been doing, uh, parking assistance. CDOT's been great about giving signs out around the Boulevard, uh, to allow for increased signage and parking assistance. And, like, you know, I'm trying to get the clicker here. You got, okay. And then, um, as I mentioned before, uh, the website is already up, that, that details the program, uh, and that has the application. Uh, Eric Booker and Eric Asbo have already been good about communicating with a lot of our business owners to explain the, the, uh, the construct, to, to explain the details of the construction and to kind of outline the timeframe of all of the construction. Uh, and then in addition, uh, we also want to make sure that any businesses that are, um, applying for mitigation, that we also make sure that they register, or that we teach them about the registration process, uh, to register with the city as a, as a vendor, um, especially for our businesses that are, uh, owned by minorities or women or veterans. They could, uh, also be part of our diverse business enterprises, and then we also want to educate these small businesses about our existing growing small business grant, which as you all know, is, uh, a grant that allows up to ten thousand dollars, uh, for small businesses that have hired, uh, five full-time people within the past year. Um, and so with that, I'll take any questions that people may have.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, okay, first of all, let me go back to Big Dig.
Yes.
On South Broad Street.
That's right.
Okay, tell me why, tell me why you didn't implement this idea then?
Yeah, so our internal policy has been that we don't do mitigation unless the construction project is gonna exceed ninety days. So the Big Dig was about sixty, um, and it actually finished early. Um, and so it may have been seventy at the most, but it wa- it, it wasn't ninety. Uh, so that's why we didn't do it for the Big Dig.
Okay.
Yeah, and the rea- and just, not to, not to, uh, interrupt you. But the reason for that is because we do want businesses to understand that construction is a very real part of the city's life. And so, and the, the, the construction and the, the improvements that we do in public infrastructure, those improvements are gonna have a benefit for the businesses. Um, so we don't want to get every business in the habit of expecting a mitigation or a thousand dollar check every time we do construction.
Roger, yeah, we dealt with it, and we got through just fine down there on South Broad Street. Without any help. Public Works was great in moving traffic around, by the way. It did a fabulous job in the Big Dig. Let me put that on the record. Very good job. Um, you're, I'm a little concerned that you've already opened this up and created a website, and it's already, it's already on the going. Why do you need us?
Well, we need, we wanted to go ahead and to get the website up and going because we wanted to go ahead and get application, because it takes a while for a business owner to stop doing their daily do- their, their daily duties at the business, uh, and then to sit down or to step away from their work, uh, to fill out an application. And so our effort in, in going ahead and opening up the application process was in no way to subvert the city council process, it was just an effort to get things moving so that if we are able to get approval, then we could go ahead and start getting, uh, assistance to businesses as quickly as possible.
Okay. Will the petitioners, if you will, or applicants actually sign, like, an affidavit stating that?
So what was, what we did before was, uh, during the Wilcox program, people simply typed up, uh, a statement, and they signed the personal statement, um, and they turned that in. That was the only thing that was required during the Wilcox phase. Now, I will say that the Wilcox mitigation program predated, uh, my time and Sharita's time with, with the city, um, but that was the bar that was set. Um, and so I'm, I think Sharita and I are open to inclu- including or incorporating any more required documentation that the city council would recommend.
Okay. Last question or comment, if I, if I may, sir.
Yes, sir.
So basically, we're gonna give a hundred and nineteen businesses a thousand dollars?
Not a hundred and nineteen. Um, so we think that there are gonna be nineteen in, in the MLK corridor based on the outreach that we've done. However, we wanted to go ahead and move that money to the IDB, uh, for, uh, any future construction mitigation efforts that we may have down the road. So this is not an effort to, um, to do a hundred and nineteen businesses right now. We're just trying to get money over to the IDB in the event that there's another construction mitigation project. We don't necessarily have to come to, to the council to do that.
That led to my next question, and I, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, if I may.
No, please, please, please.
Thank you. So in District Four, for example, we have a project that's ongoing because we're getting some infrastructure done, and District Four could theoretically, uh, apply for these, uh, incentives, if you will, if we were to meet the criteria of construction periods.
Correct.
Of this length.
Correct. And that way, we wouldn't have to, by moving the one hundred and nineteen thousand, which is well over what we need for MLK, we could go ahead and have money set aside for District Four businesses in the event that the District Four, that the construction mitigation in District Four meets these criteria.
And my last comment, if I may, Mr. Chair, was that, that this would be, uh, obviously citywide, not just honed in on the Central Business District.
That is correct. So again, I think Sharita and I were looking down the road and thinking, let's get the money, let's have a pool of money that we can set aside for mitigation, um, so that in the future, if we have other mitigation, uh, efforts that, that come up because of construction, because there's been a lot of construction lately, then we can, we can be prepared to deploy that money, uh, very quickly.
Very good. And I, and I ask that question just simply because as we go into budget season, um, we, uh, we want to know that the city appreciates the efforts and, and, and the, uh, contribution of District Four, not just the downtown area.
Absolutely.
It seems to get a lot of attention, no offense, uh, but we just want to make sure that, uh, those efforts are also, uh, that we're in the mix and in the thanking.
We, our, our Office of Economic Development very much cares about District Four. I grew up in District Four, so I have not forgotten about District Four.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad to hear. Thank you.
Or five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. And I'm so happy that y'all are considering other districts other than seven in downtown, so it just makes my heart really warm, okay? Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So define the MLK corridor for me.
So our current mitigation map defines the MLK corridor as MLK Boulevard from US Highway twenty-seven to Central Avenue. Um, and then it also ha- includes, um, part of Patton Parkway, parts of Georgia Avenue, and parts of the intersecting streets that intersect with MLK between Highway twenty-seven and, and Central Avenue. So it's gonna, it would include like parts of Lindsey Street, parts of Houston Street, parts of Douglas Street, parts of University Street. Um, those would all be sort of in the, the corridor. So for example, Bitter Alibi would be a business that has...
So how far, how far up these little fingers are we going? A block?
A block, less than a block. Um, when you look at the mitigation map, it, it's slightly less than a block.
So you, you have a mitigation map that you haven't shared with us?
No, the mitigation map is, 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 is online, um, but I could cer- certainly get you a copy of it.
Well, I mean in this presentation.
Uh, that's...
Did I miss it?
No, you're right. I didn't share it in the, in this, in this presentation. My apologies.
So is the Miller Park project, the refurbishing of that section of road?
Mm-hmm.
And the repaving of MLK towards Central, is that viewed as one project?
No, it's viewed as two projects.
So, so...
This is initially because of Miller Park, though, because that was when we started hearing from the businesses. Because the businesses along, on both sides of MLK, but especially in Councilman Bird's side of MLK, which is, I guess, east MLK, um, east of, of, of Georgia Avenue, those businesses said, hey, we get a lot of our traffic from central downtown, from the Central Business District that comes up the Boulevard, um, and we're not getting that now because of the closure. And then in addition to that, we're about to be impacted again by the forty-five days of repaving. And so that's, that's what we heard.
So you're saying, so then let's throw the paving out?
Yes.
But you feel like the effects of Miller Park stretched all the way down to Central?
I feel like we heard from businesses all the way downs, all the way down MLK, almost to Central, that, yes, they were feeling the effect of the Bulli- of the, that stretch of MLK being closed. Now, I, I think that's a fair question, and I can't sort of scientifically prove whether they did or didn't, but that's what we were hearing from the MLK merchants.
Okay. You're, Councilman, okay. Uh, Councilman Bird.
Thank you. So I have no problem with mitigation funds. I do have a problem with form, and that is, the money hasn't been approved yet, and yet you put it up there. So did you have contingency funds?
No, what we communicated to the businesses were that we can go ahead and open up the application process, however, all of this is contingent upon city council approval. However, all of this is contingent upon city council approval.
So that like put us out there, right? Yeah, no question.
Well, no, I mean, we had to, we had to be honest, we have to be honest about the process with the business people. I mean, I don't have the power to authorize the grants without you all, so, but at the same time, we do want to go ahead and open up the application process because for some of the businesses, especially for some of the less sophisticated businesses, it will take a while for them to get their applications in.
Get, get it ready.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and, and I think the question was just based on form.
Okay.
Maybe we can do better next time.
Yes, ma'am.
The other one is, it's like these blanket contracts. Again, I think the mitigation funds are helpful and the grants aren't that big, so...
Right.
However, why would we move more than we needed? That's number one. Because, the last question is, we're always looking for economic development funds to help people.
Yes.
And, and not just merchants.
Right.
Who may or may not have taken a loss. I'm still thinking about that.
Right.
So that's $119,000.
Yes.
So who's not going to get help in economic development because we moved that over?
Um, the, the money that was, the $119,000 was set into a special fund of the Office of Economic Development. There's, we have not found a sort of a cause for why that money was sitting there, who it was specifically to benefit, so I can't tell you who's not going to get help.
So you had a special fund?
So there was, there was the fund.
You're thinking, golly, where did this come from and what was its purpose?
And, yeah, that's correct. And so we said, well, let's go ahead and move this over to the Industrial Development Board so that we can go ahead and start doing the construction mitigation grants, and then we'll have enough for the MLK businesses. And then if we have other construction projects like in District Four, for example, then we'll already have enough money in the pool to help them as well.
Okay, I, I think I'm still with form, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You're, you're good?
Yeah.
You sure?
No.
We can come back to you. Think about, okay. Councilman Bird, please.
Okay. First of all, Jermaine, Sharita, I just think, not just for District Eight and MLK, I think it's amazing that you all are looking at these small businesses and trying to give them some relief. When Miller Park did shut down, I was talking to the people at the camp house, and whereas people would come through Miller Park and come down MLK making their way towards Central, they tend to go around or hit the freeway instead of coming that way. So they would stop at Starbucks instead of coming to the camp house. And so they was explaining to me that they was feeling a bit of a punch from that.
Right.
And then the, some of the smaller businesses on MLK, due to the fact that the process do take, it takes a while.
Yes.
I kind of understand why the website was opened up early because now if this money is approved, it will move a little faster to get things done. It's not millions of dollars, it is $1,000.
Right.
For the business, and you'll be surprised at what $1,000 can do to help a small business just make ends meet and get over those humps. So I'm really proud of you guys. Thank you. I think that was good to look out for the businesses, just in the, in the forefront, sometimes transparency when we're talking and trying to understand what's going on. It helps us out a lot, but salute and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Perfect. Hi, Sharita. I just wanted to respond to both that and Councilwoman Bird's when it comes to sort of the form issue. I think in light of sort of how the program was rolled out and, and the announcement was made, including this particular, you know, mitigation grant component, we have since reached out to both Public Works and Transportation to ask them to give us their planogram for future projects and the associated timeline so that we know ahead of time. Because I think it hit us just as it hit everyone else. It was sort of, did we not knew, did we not know we were doing this project? And when did we know it? And, and what was the planning part? And at what point should economic development have been made aware that, that, you know, mitigation grants were not programmed on the Public Works side or not programmed on the CDOT side? And so I think moving forward, we are asking those questions internally, all the departments, so that we know, okay, in six months, there's a construction project coming up. What does that look like? How long will that take? What departments will be involved? Is there, is it on a business corridor? What's the impact? The length of time? All those kinds of things. And then backing up and saying, okay, have we planned mitigation grants for it? And if so, what's our timeline for rolling that out so that, again, we're all aware and we're not coming at the last minute and making these requests? So I appreciate the concern from both of you because we have heard it and we've asked those same questions internally, and we're trying to mitigate that moving forward so that we're not in this position again.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Councilman Henderson.
Sharita, and that was exactly what I was going to ask. I mean, you know, I was going to ask, did we not know that this project was going to take longer than 90 days to complete? Which means if we knew we did it for Wilcox Tunnel, then we're probably going to do it for this project and maybe do it for another project that is going to be longer than 90 days. So I think there's a process that we could start with city council, one, by maybe trying to just approve a mitigation map and then deciding, okay, we're going to give $1,000. And then, and then at least if we approve a mitigation map, then we can wait for the applications to come in and then approve the amount of money that we need to move rather than just, I don't know if willy-nilly is the right word, just putting some money into the...
IDB.
Yeah.
IDB.
IDB, thank you. Lost my word. Rather than just putting a sum of money into IDB where actually we've already approved the process, then, then we determine how much money we need to move as opposed to just putting an amount in there that, that we're just dumping money into. Which I would rather do that as to kind of the process that we're doing here.
Okay. I mean, I certainly, I think Sharita and I don't really have any, have any issues with that. Is that something that you would want to do for, for the MLK businesses or like for future reference?
I would not be opposed to doing that here, just approve a mitigation map. And then once we determine the amount of businesses within that map that need assistance, then we approve that amount of money.
Okay. Would you, do you want us to, just, just to get you the map? Who would you like us to get you the map? I guess is my, my question. Because, I mean, it's online now, and that's a map that was determined by CDOT.
Well, I think, I think the map needs to probably at least be in the form of a resolution, which means it probably needs to be on our agenda, maybe in the two-week agenda now at this point.
Okay. All right, we can do it.
That's good with this council.
Yeah. Is that good with the council? Okay, is that Councilman Henderson? Okay. Or Councilman Bird?
Sharita, and would there be a, like, say even after this right here, my understanding, what I'm hearing now is that, say, the, the business that are suffering from some type of hardship right now because of what was going on with the construction or whatever the case, they can then apply for a grant up to $1,000 from the city to help them withstand the punch of the construction that went on, correct?
Yes.
And in the process of that, right now, they're waiting on, like you said, I know Bitter Alibi, I know G's Detroit Sausage, I know the other little brewery down there. They're waiting now, a lot of them don't have the business as the Champies would have too as well.
Right.
But they're very small business, so they're waiting on some relief to help them from being displaced from the business as well. And that shortens the time on them waiting for their relief to go ahead, that's why you put it out there now, and to go ahead and apply for this, to put this money aside in the IDB, correct?
Correct.
Now, one of my other concerns, so say this right here happens and you pay out $19,000.
Yes.
And that will create somewhat of a roadmap to say, okay, these many businesses were affected outside of the map that you said that you have that shows the corridors of other businesses. Then Councilman Leford's district, they apply, and say it's 15 businesses or 20 businesses, so now we at $39,000.
Right.
And they apply for it. That money starts to dwindle away. So at some time in budgeting or sometime in the near future, would the city be, would we be looking at saying, hey, we need to start supplementing or putting something aside to say that, hey, during budgeting or whatever time, to take care of the citizens of Chattanooga, the business owners who have invested in the city, to say, hey, we are concerned about your business, we appreciate your business, and we understand that construction or things can offset your business. So the city then probably during budgeting would set aside something, or you guys will try to propose that or something?
Typically, it depends on whether the project is coming out of CDOT, TDOT, or Public Works. And so for instance, if it were a TDOT project, they would build in mitigation grants into their funding.
TDOT.
TDOT would. I don't know the history of CDOT projects, but, but historically, you know, where I come from, you know, if it is, you know, a local Department of Transportation project, they would also build that into their budget. But again, it's based on the parameters that, that the council sets, so that if it's a project that's over 90 days, then along with that, depending on the corridor, the map would be identified and then, you know, target mitigation grant funds would be set aside for that. And sometimes the funds not for businesses. Sometimes the funds are, you know, there's mitigation and we're doing $5,000 for billboards or signage or advertising or, or wayfinding signs because, you know, you've got to change the route. I mean, it's not always just for a particular company that's, or a small business that's had some impact. Sometimes it's for all of those other things. But again, you have different infrastructure projects, they have different budgets that come from different pools of funds, and historically, you want to wrap in those, all of those other needs other than construction into that.
Got you. Okay.
I mean, the goal, the goal for us is if it's, if it's a CDOT or a TDOT or Public Works and there's a negative impact on businesses, those funds should come from those particular departments, not necessarily economic development.
Okay. Councilwoman Coonroy. Oh, she did? Okay. Councilwoman Bird.
I like what Councilman Henderson said. Since you put, understandably, the cart before the, the ask before the money.
Yes, we did.
Okay, I get that. I think I like the idea of, of, since you have this extra money, see what you've got. And if you have 19 businesses, $19,000. So, so if I'm hearing correctly, I don't, I don't know that I'm ready to transfer 119,000 there. I almost like the request and then fund the request, which you all will have vetted very well. I think you've got a great, great idea there. The other thing is, when there are road changes or detours, doesn't TDOT do this already? I mean, CDOT? I mean, what's the extra money for? The signage and all of that?
So I, I think in the case of the Wilcox project a couple of years ago, I think that CDOT actually had money set, set aside for mitigation.
But don't they have it set aside in their budget anyway? They know if they're doing work, they need to buy signs.
I think they, they, they do sometimes. But for example, the, the Miller Park closure of MLK Boulevard was actually not a CDOT project, it was a Public Works project. And Public Works, in our conversations with them, they did not have the money set aside for any mitigation efforts. And so we said, well, we got to do something to help the businesses.
Okay.
So maybe we can find the money in economic development.
So maybe we need to plan ahead. Sharita's going, really? You think so? Yeah. I think that what we probably need to do is, is plan ahead and see what all the moving parts are. We're being totally reactive a lot instead of proactive.
Yes, ma'am.
And what's happening is so important that I think we need to do it right.
Yes.
So those are just my concerns.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the Tubman Matching Grant discussion.
And before I get started, I just want to be sure that Councilman Ledford, have I responded to your questions? Did I answer?
I have to look here.
Okay. I, I recognize that on your face, which is why I ask, and I appreciate that feedback. We felt that way too in economic development. Perfect. So, so the next item is on the Tubman Grant.
Is there a presentation?
There is not a presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure before we got started.
This is a nice quick, quick, easy one.
No, we're good.
And so RPA is in the process of completing the Area Three Plan. I know the advisory committee has been pulled together, they've had their first meeting. The, the former Tubman Home site falls within that Area Three Plan. At some point down the road, we recognize that once the plan comes out and there will be recommendations for either existing zoning, rezoning, upzoning, downzoning, we don't know that yet. There's a community input piece that's part of that. And so based on the area plan that's rolled out and the community input, we know that we will start to market the Tubman site. And with that in mind, we did reach out to the chamber to say if there are any opportunities for you guys to, to uncover any site development grants, that would do all the site studies necessary for us to start the marketing and look to, to reactivate the site and bring something to it, we'd like to, to partner in applying for that. So we did apply for a Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Site Prep Grant. We were awarded a grant along with 24 other communities across the state, and it will cover things like updated Phase One study, Phase Two studies, a wetland review, archaeological review, protected species survey, geological support, master planning, mask rating plan for pad-ready site, an engineering plan for relocation of sewer lines, all those kinds of things. So it is a $100,000 grant and there is a $100,000 match to it. We have it in a line item in economic development for business development, for site prep, for, for large projects, and that's the line item that we would like to use for that. And so this is a resolution that is authorizing the mayor to accept the grant and provide the match. So we're doing that ahead of, ahead of, of taking care of that little, you know, list. Perfect. And I'm, I'm open for any questions, if you have any questions. We are still awaiting the final award document from the state. At this point, they issued a press release on Wednesday, the 21st. We received a letter essentially stating the same, the same day, saying, congratulations, you were, you were selected along with other communities. And we're just waiting for the final document that would have to be signed, and at that point, we would need to attach with it a resolution saying that we are authorizing the existing match with that, or the $100,000 match with that. Any questions?
Councilwoman Bird. You still? I did, I did not deactivate you?
No, you didn't deactivate.
She's still lit up.
Yeah, I'm still lit up.
Okay. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sharita, is the chamber going to be actively advertising the use of a TIF for development of the site?
And not to my knowledge, no.
But that will be, will that be on the table?
I do not know at this point.
Okay.
We have not, you know, the, we've had conversations around it, but we've had conversations around a number of TIFs throughout the community. I think it's just a function of, you know, what the community needs and, and the highest and best use for the site, and then what would go along with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sharita.
Councilwoman Coonroy.
Thank you. I'm glad that something happened and getting ready to happen, but I most definitely would love to see it start to begin to get developed while our mayor is still in office, because I think that'd give him a plus one. And it'd be something that he's done and not something that we continue to work from other previous mayors. So I would love to see that happen. And just wanted you to know that I share that same sentiment with getting notified, not in a timely manner. So I could just imagine how your plate was. You probably was giving this a week or so before and said, here. And then you were sent out there to the wolves, which would be us to get drilled. But the people that's responsible for doing it, they're not here to be addressed on why is that a continuous thing that they can, they always do. They always do this to city council as if we don't matter.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And I'd also like to say that, you know, both, you know, Public Works, working on this project, wanted to make sure that, that, you know, businesses saw some relief. The same with, with CDOT, with the paving project. I mean, there's recognition. And I think as a staff, we all came together and said, okay, you know, while we're working on these projects, we need to ourselves support these businesses. So, you know, if you saw us working on a Saturday, we were going to Uncle Larry's for fish on a Saturday. Or if we were here on a Friday, we were having lunch at Memo's on a Friday, just to make sure that we were spending our own dollars on these boulevards, because we wanted to see firsthand what the impact was. And it wasn't just the mayor's office or economic development. I mean, CDOT was there, and, and Public Works was there. And, and we were all trying to do our best to make sure that, that we were kind of, you know, helping provide some moral support for these businesses, and, and being in front of them to say, hey, we're the ones that are sort of, you know, making this mess, but, but we're here to support you. And, and so, I think that's, that's part of, that earlier mitigation grant is wanting to say, we're, we'd like to, to give you help as soon as possible. But then also, you know, with everything else, it's, we recognize we need to do a better job planning, and we need to plan across departments, and we need to collaborate, and we need to do that sooner rather than later. So, we hear you.
Okay. Any, any further questions? Okay, I'll just back up just for one little item. This business owners' meeting on April the eleventh, what time is it and where is it gonna be?
Uh, it's gonna be, um, at four-thirty, four-thirty to six-thirty. And it'll be in the Mayor's Large Conference Room in City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll be walking businesses through how to apply.
Okay.
For the grant, and walking them through like what, uh, what documentation they need to provide.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for the presentations. Uh, at this time, if there's no further questions, we'll move on to ordinance on first reading for April the tenth. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter Eleven by the addition of a new Article Seventeen entitled Small Businesses, Business Construction Mitigation Grant Program, and to amend ordinance known as the FY 2018 Budget Ordinance, so as to reappropriate one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars from the Department of Economic and Community Development for use in the Small Business Construction Mitigation Grant Program to the Industrial Development Board.
Well, I think that speaks for itself. Uh, number seven, resolutions.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to exercise option to renew with River City Ducks LLC in substantially the form attached for a one-year renewal of the license agreement for the non-exclusive use of the Ross Landing Ramp.
Councilman Oglesby, any question? No, I have none. Seven B, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Economic and Community Development to accept if awarded a Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Grant for the former Harriet Tubman Home sites in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, with the city's matching funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for a total amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Are there any further questions on this matter? Okay, uh, with that being said, we are adjourned until six o'clock. Oh, I'm sorry, no. Phew. We are not adjourned. Okay, uh, C, thank you, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Economic and Community Development to award home program funding to Chattanooga Community Housing Development Organization for the development of the affordable homeownership opportunities in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and to Tower Construction Company to develop four affordable rental houses in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a total amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars, and to authorize the reallocation of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in home funding from a previously authorized Chattanooga Neighborhood Enterprise project as referenced in Resolution Number Two Eight Nine Three Four to a new building located at Twenty One Oh Four Union Ave for eight affordable rental units.
Any, Councilwoman Coonrod, you good? Okay, Madam Clerk, seven D.
A resolution authorizing the, the transfer of one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars from the Department of Economic and Community Development to the Industrial Development Board for Small Business Support Services, including construction mitigation grants for qualified small businesses impacted by construction projects.
Any questions? Okay, with that being said, we are officially adjourned until six o'clock. Thank you all.